I'm calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the Monday, June 21st, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting held at the Middleborough Town Hall, 10 Neckerston Avenue. We are being recorded by MCAM to be broadcast on both the Verizon and Comcast, and you can also stream on MCAM, which is MCCAM02346.com. You can stream this live there tonight. So welcome, and would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have anything under unanticipated? Anyone from the audience have anything under unanticipated? Okay. Anyone from the board have anything under announcements and recognitions? Anyone from the audience have anything under announcements and recognitions? Oh, here we go.
Hello. Hello, Master Ferrin. I just wanted to remind everybody, July 3rd, big, big parade, first one in 15 months. So come on out and come see the July 4th parade, and your location is?
The north, it's North Middleborough Green. It starts on, and that is the route. It has been for 42 years or so.
Ninety-six years?
Nineties, many years, and it starts at 10 o'clock. Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience have anything under announcements and recognitions? Hearing none, could I please get a motion to approve the minutes from 6:14, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And could I please get a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or her designated to sign the warrant for week ending 6/26/2021?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, up first, vote to open the special town meeting warrant to be held on October 4th, 2021, and to close the warrant on August 13th, 2021. Could I please get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Bob, did you want to say anything? It's pretty straightforward and clear. Okay, so the warrants will be, let me see, we will open them. The meeting will be held, town meeting, on October 4th, and the warrants will close on August 13th. That means if you have a warrant you want on that town meeting, you have to have it into the town manager's office by August 13th. Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Germaine?
Do you know if that will be at the new high school?
What's that?
At the new high school?
That's our goal, yep.
Okay, so the goal is to have it at the new high school on October 4th? Let's hope. Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to have a discussion on the Santander parking lot lease. Okay, so Emily, did you want to address this? I know you put this together for us. Thank you very much. Just introduce yourself for the reporting.
Sure. Emily Surratt, Assistant to the Town Manager. So we've had a lease with Santander for parking for the past five years. It expired at the end of January of this year. So we've been working with Santander to try to get an extension put together for the lease agreement, which we have before you, so pretty much it.
Okay, so historically, I see that it has increased by 10% every year, and they are requesting to have it remain at what it is now. It's $8,000?
A little more than $8,000.
A little more than $8,000, yeah.
Yeah.
With no increases over the next five years. Is that correct? $8,880.25, okay, which is $740.02 a month. Okay, and this is a portion of the lot that is behind that whole set of buildings. The town owns part of it, and Santander leases it for parking. Okay, comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers?
Is this the only business that we have a lease agreement for in that town parking lot? In the parking lot?
I believe so.
Is this the only one?
Well, Bennys, we have a lease with Bennys. We are responsible for maintaining the lot.
Historically, has it always increased by 10% yearly?
The Santana, yes. And we can read, you know, I'll wait to hear what Emily and I talked about this morning, and I said, well, we'll take guidance from the Selectmen. If you want us to go back, we can definitely go back, but I wanted to hear your thoughts before we went back to them.
Is that end of the parking lot the only portion that the town owns?
No.
Chris?
If you could, yeah, I know it's a piecemeal, so if you could kind of give us a bit clearer picture.
So the town actually owns four spots, which are right behind the old Bennys building. And the reason we own those is there's a fire system buried in the ground there, so I assume that's why we own that one small parcel. The rest is either owned by the Bennys, people who bought Bennys, or I guess the bank as well. And then, as you get further towards North Main, it gets broken up by those properties that own or have frontage on Center Street.
So are our four parcels just kind of clumped together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's one parcel, but it's equal to four parking spots.
Oh, it's only four spots?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's one parcel, four parking spots.
So we're talking about four parking spots?
Yeah.
And there's no guarantee that Santander people actually park there? It's whoever comes, right?
Correct. Yeah, it depends on the time of the year. For instance, when the schools open over there, then, you know, that takes priority, or they're there first, I guess you could say.
Okay, all right. That really clears it up. And we own no more than four spots in that whole parking lot?
Well, not half, yeah.
On that half?
We don't own anything. Well, we own-
By North Main, we own next to the co-op, too.
Yeah, the entrances by the co-op, we own, by the glass shop.
Yeah. We own all those spots.
To the end of the building.
On the street, yeah.
And then, but everything between that and-
And this, yeah.
Reedies, Old Reedies Archery, I don't own the buildings anymore, it's the owners at least.
School Street?
That's owned by the properties along Center Street.
Okay, all right.
Multiple, multiple owners, count that in.
I didn't realize that the town owns so little. I thought we owned more. Go ahead, Mr. Rosenthal.
What about that access coming off of Center Street between Honeydew and the bank? Is it, do we own that?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, so they're not dependent on us signing a lease to have their drive-through window or anything like that? Oh, okay.
No. The only drainage structure in there is, it's actually right behind Honeydew, so that's why, you know, the parking lot's in such rough shape. There's, other than that one structure, which really is at the high point of the parking lot, everything flows towards North Main Street or towards the building. So, you know, I have to tread lightly when doing any work in there, because you don't want to start changing flows of water in there and causing damage. So we, you know, very careful when we do work in there, if we do work in there, as a funding.
That's why it stayed the same for a long time. Okay, that gives us a really clear picture. Thank you, because I've been living here a long time and still haven't figured it out. Now I see it. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers?
So from what Santana's proposing, and what we are proposing is a $15,234 difference. I would propose that we just do a 5% increase. So that would be five equal payments each year, and that mean amount of $10,403.74.
Okay, that's still an increase. For four spots, I'm inclined to say go with the $8,000, just to make it easier for them to do business. Would you want to something you want to just say?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, obviously, we went up 10% a year in this lease to bring it to some kind of reasonable rental fee. If we continue to go up 10% a year, in other words, in the previous five years, we went up $2,800, we'd end up going up $4,800 in the same span of time. That's ridiculous, frankly, under the circumstances. I mean, we could put some kind of very small increase per year, like $200 a year or something like that, if we want to increase it at all. I frankly think that's a pretty fair rental for those four parking spaces.
The $8,000?
$8,000, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Battistini?
So is the first time we ever leased those spots in 2016? So we've only had one prior lease with them?
I'm not sure. Is this the only lease we've had, Emily?
That's the only lease I've had.
Okay. So I wish, you know, when we made these leases, that we leased, you know, five-year leases, since generally we have an entirely new board, that we could put a little clause in it that says, we're going up 10% because of this reason, you know, to get to a reasonable amount incrementally, and then it's kind of expected that it will level out or go up according to, you know, what's happening in five years from now. Because again, in five years, we may have the same issue.
We probably won't. Well, we won't.
Well, somebody else will have the same issue in five years.
Maybe you will. Maybe you will. I won't. Okay, so I haven't, I, you know, I, like I said, I have no problem stopping it at the $8,880, and I think what Mr. Rosenthal proposed, a $200 increase a year, would be fair. Anyone else? Mr. Germaine, did you want to weigh in? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so, pleasure the board. I know we have someone waiting to speak. Mr. Givinoni?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Someone who has actually done work in that parking lot in the past. I'm very familiar with it, and I pulled up the mapping. Without the use of the other leased property that town of Middleborough owns, they would not have a drive-through. They need us. Okay? They need us, or they don't have a drive-through, because they'd have to literally make a U-turn in a real small, narrow area. And I'm not saying we want to cause problems for a drive-through, but I like the idea of less money. I mean, because for $8,000, I can put up a stockade fence, and they won't have any business, and they'll leave town like every other one, because, every other business, because there's no way of having a drive, if you don't have a drive-through, you can't have a bank anymore, pretty much. But I just think that we're paying an awful lot of money, because the Bennys one is coming up at some point. When we finish that one, it's going to probably be considerably more. And we use that parking lot, we maintain that parking lot, we spend a lot of money to maintain that parking lot. And I know they paint their own stuff for the drive-through, because they choose to, but it's something that as long as you hold, I like the idea of what Mr. Rosenthal said, holding maybe a couple hundred bucks just for the sake of going up, but making a 10% bump is kind of drastic.
Because it will just, it's potentially just getting, yeah.
It gets worse and worse.
Outrageous, and then-
Well, compound interest.
Well, and this is not, on this piece, I think this was the first one that we ever had on this one, because this one here was kind of a forgotten piece. Bennys owned quite a bit of the other pieces around, and then individual owners did as well. And it was a, I think it was seven different owners. For some reason, in my mind, I recall that when Anna was putting this all together, Anna Malavenko was putting this together. So I remember her going through and getting all these pieces put together, so we had the rights to do this. I appreciate you looking at this and maybe asking to hold a little bit tighter on the financial reins, because every penny counts. We're over $100 million right now in this town budget, so we're over 100.
Okay, and we don't want to price people out, either. Okay, so we have their proposal for $8,880.25 for five years, not increasing. We have Selectmen Demers' potential, was a 5% increase, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then we have Selectmen Rosenthal's $200 increase. What would the board like to do?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Battistini?
I'll make a motion that we go with a $200 increase, starting 2021, for year one.
Okay, so that would be the-
So year one would be $9,080.25, and then $200 after that each year.
All right, I'm just looking here. Okay, I see. Got it. Okay, do we have a second on that for discussion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further comments? Does that-
I would, I think what I'm proposing is basically splitting the difference, and I think anything after that, it would plateau at that amount. So if we wanted to do five years at $10,000 a year across the board, that would, that's still $10,000 less than what we're proposing in this contract. I think it's a nice round number.
Okay. So, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, we haven't proposed going up 10%. That was just something that was put together as a possibility. What the actual contract has in it is the 8882 number.
Right. I think historically, in the last one, I saw it in here, the last lease, we did increase by the 10% every year. So the last contract we had from 2016 was an increase every year of 10%. So-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The 10% from previous years was $600.
Yeah, it's a big difference now, yeah.
It's a big difference. I mean, you should be a good neighbor and throw me a few dollars to the town.
Yeah. All right, so the motion we have on the table now is to begin with $200 above the $8,880, which is $9,000. Not quite, $9,800.
$25.
And 25 cents. Okay, and then to go up $200 a year. Is everyone clear on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, so you got that, Emily? All right, great. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. We're going to have a discussion on replacement of lead service water lines funding.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, before Mike and Chris speak, as you know, President Biden signed into law the American Recovery Act, which will provide millions of dollars to communities across the country. And the town of Middleborough, the town of Middleborough, at least in this round, will be receiving $2.6 million. The town of Middleborough is a non-entitlement community, so we will submit our application to the Department of the Secretary of the Administration of Finance, which I did last week, which was basically a one-pager with basic information. The funds will be distributed from A and F. If we're a non-entitlement community, we would have had to apply directly to the United States Treasury, but in our case, we did not have to do that. Chris and Mike will talk about the importance of replacing lead service lines to rate payers across the town, and we will be receiving $2.6 million in this round. It is my understanding that we will receive $1.3 million this year, $1.3 million next year. We will have four years to spend the $2.6 million. Now, I hear there may, there may be another part of money coming, either from the county or from the state. I think they're still debating those issues. The state legislature is involved. But the focus tonight should be on the $2.6 million, which we know we're going to directly receive. We will receive the $1.3 this year and the $1.3 next year on a quarterly basis, I believe. Could be monthly. I think it's quarterly. It's going to come in like a cherry sheet, a payment to the town, which will be tracked by the accounting's office, and there is obviously documentation that we will have to submit to A and F, and I'm sure they'll get it on to the United States Treasury. So at this time, I would turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit about the lead service line replacement program. We, Chris, Mike and I had several meetings on this topic. Last week, we met with Wright Pierce, who will be assisting the town if we were to move forward and get the endorsement this evening of the Board of Selectmen.
So, Mr. Rosenthal?
This was on my radar to be done after the large tank projects, Miziris project, and the Cotty project. So I've already started the inventory, which is 90% done, of 6200 services, of stuff dating back to the 1800s. So it's a long, tedious, all through the pandemic. We started it before the pandemic. So the inventory is 90% created. A rough, quick estimate, there's probably 400 to 500 lead services in town. Through some of these large water main replacements, we will replace some of them. Cotty is only going to replace between 18 and 20 services, so not a large amount. The Forest Street project, I think we did 38 services. The problem is, on these projects, we're not going into private property. Under this program, it goes all the way from the main to the surface of the edge of the road, into the property owns, house, right up to the meter. So it's a long, tedious project. I think that's why I put it off, to get rid of my large projects and start working on this. It's mandated by the EPA, which is going to be, I think, revitalized after this pandemic is coming and the new administration. So with this opportunity, with this money, when me, Bob, and Chris and Wright Pierce sat down and talked about it, I just saw that, let me get on it now, even though with the other projects, it would, I think we wouldn't see a rate increase, which we haven't seen in over seven years. I think this would prolong that absence of a rate increase. But I just think it's a great opportunity. It's dealing with 400, 500 different people, which is going to be a difficult process. Every yard's different. That's why it ranges from $4,000 to $10,000. I took an average of $7,000 to 450 units. That's $3.1 million. So you see that we'll spend this $2.6 million easily. The only difficult thing would be to get it done in four years. I don't think Chris is going to let me cop up South Main Street the next couple of months to put in some lead services. So, and then you also got Center and School Street and a couple others. So that may run into some difficulties with the four-year mortuary on roads, and you're just getting this, the contractor to do this. I would like to see if this does happen, the contractor do two a day. My engineer says you'd be pushing them. You know, difficult to run driveways, landscaping, and all that good stuff. So one a day, you know, depending on flow of fill, details, you're probably averaging $7,000 per service all the way into the house. This would also help me with some meter replacements that's been neglected over the last 20 years. I've been working on some meters that are coming up at 20 years old, but it's just a difficult process getting into some of these residents. So I could compound it onto this program, too. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Madam Chair, so there'll be two options. As Mike said, there's basically, this will be a mandate from the federal government, from EPA, correct? So we have two options. Either the rate payers will pay, three options. The rate payers would pay, which would be an increase in fees. We would take it from retained earnings, which would be a hefty amount of money that we could borrow, I guess it would be four. Or we could just take, you know, use the money that we're getting from the federal government to do the work. Again, as Mike said, this would not cause a rate increase, and it would not drain retained earnings, nor would it impact upon rating, because we wouldn't have to borrow. So it is money that is eligible for lead replacement, and obviously very important as well.
I have, are there other projects besides this one that are eligible for the $2.6 million?
Waste water projects, which it's very minimal. Chris Todd and I talked, but we probably, a couple hundred thousand dollars in equipment that we may be able to take out of retained earnings. You could use it for revenue replacement, which we really haven't lost revenue replacement. We can use it for premium pay, which causes issues. And that's it. For infrastructure, it's not road replacement. It's basically water and sewer.
Yeah, the sewer project we're looking at is I and I control, which is essentially, we have cross connections between the drainage system and sewer system in town, the old systems. So it'd be identifying them, coming up with a plan to replace or to eliminate those cross connections.
But that's nominal. It's not a big project?
Depends on the study. Depends on what comes out of there and how many cross-crush connections there are.
Nothing is nominal, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
But we have to take, we have to take that first step on that.
Right, and this one's ready to go, though. You've been, you've got a jumpstart, and you're ready to move on it.
Yep, it's a jumpstart.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Battistini?
How much do we currently have retained earnings? Is it like 4 million?
A little over, it'll be certified in the fall, but right now, you have, I think, close to 5 million, four and a half to 5 million.
So that'd be half of it. I think it makes sense to use the APRA money for this.
Yeah, even if we had to make up between the $2.6 and the $3.1 million, it's only 500,000.
And that's years down the road, Greg. You said it's going to be four years.
We also have a lot of projects that have, are just starting to hit now, East Main Street Pump Station and Treatment Plant. We have the well under construction right now. We just finished, well, Miziris is under design right now. So all these projects are going to start hitting and taking out of that retained earnings. So, you know, we need to look ahead.
Yeah, we want to use this, well, we can. I agree. The four-year schedule, is that a firm number? Or I know a lot of grants you can apply for extensions. Do you have any idea?
From all the webinars that I've attended, I've attended probably three or four, it's four, four to five years. So if there is extension, it would be granted for everyone.
Okay, all right. Any other? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I assume that this, coming from the federal government, had something to do with what went on in Flint, Michigan, with the obvious lead poisoning?
Yeah.
And is, when you come up with the ones that need replacing, are you doing any actual testing to look at lead content in the water? Is that part of this or not?
Since 2016, give or take, we've done 600 samples since 2016. In the middle of the pandemic, we didn't have any revisions. The sample was actually higher, because I put the treatment plan online right before the pandemic. So I went from 30 samples a quarter up to 60, and then during the pandemic, I did extras, because I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to get into the houses. I didn't know the future. I didn't know the future, so I was doing 80. And since this quarter, which we're in the middle of right now, we've dropped it down to 30. So yeah, we've done a lot of sampling. The good thing is, it hasn't triggered immediate replacement. If I have a... I don't worry about it because I don't have it, but if I hit the trigger number, which I think is 10%, I have to start replacing immediately, go up to 3% of the lead service lines. Which maybe not a given year I might do anyway. When they come apart, we replace them. But the hard part is going to be, I don't have insurance to get on the private property. So we very rarely go on the private property. So we usually do from the road to the service. A perfect example was the other day on North Street, that service was 1885. We did from the road to the service and Logan payment, they did from the service into the house. And so that whole service has been done. And on most parts, we just go to the road and the homeowner's responsible. So this will change a lot of that, how we do it in the past. But to answer your question, we've had a couple lead hits on West Street, Smith Street, but we didn't go over 90 percentile, one on Born. But for most parts, we resampled, the DPW makes you resample those, and they come back pretty well by raising the pH in the water from... As an operator, I liked it at 6.8. We've gone to seven, now we've gone up almost to eight, you know, with chemicals. So we've raised the pH in the water to keep this lead getting into the water.
So the water's basically safe. I mean, I wouldn't want people to think they're drinking, you know, water that's going to give them lead poisoning.
I haven't had a, like I said, I had one on West Street, one on Smith Street, and one on Born Road, and I've subsequently retested them, and I haven't had a, over the .15 milligrams per liter, three of the last times I tested.
So I assume that the majority of this lead is coming through the mains, not from the street to the house, would you think?
In Middleborough, we haven't ever seen a lead line. Lead line would go from the main all the way into the house. It could be 10, 15, 20 feet, which I've heard they found in Bow River and a lot of the different cities. In Middleborough, usually it comes off the main and it's a lead line. It's, maybe I've seen one up to three feet at the old hitcher post in South Middleborough, it's not there anymore. That's probably the longest one I've ever seen. I think that may have been five, six feet. The one we just did on North Street the other day was probably just over a foot. So what happens is if you have a low pH, it strips the lead out of that thing, out of that surface, that lead line, and it goes into the household.
I was just wondering if some people absolutely refuse to let you go on their property?
That's, like I said, that's going to be tedious. Deal with contractors, you deal with one contractor. This is dealing 400, 500 different characteristic people.
People are people.
We're going to utilize a contractor to do the work. We're not going to do that in-house. We just...
Someone very smart talking.
And they mentioned lead copper, and I read the letters and stuff. Now, is copper dangerous in terms of water, because most hot water lines and everything?
I would replace with plastic. I'm going to expand with plastic now, 200 PSI plastic. I don't think we've done any replaces with copper in over a year, two years. The specs on the new high school were copper. I changed out all the plastic on the bid specs.
So people don't have to worry about if they have copper water lines?
Not so much, as a lead, you know.
All right. It's usually just cooking with copper. You have acids in it.
Okay, so Bob, what do you need from us today?
Just to vote, to, yeah, to support and authorize the town to move forward on this project.
Okay, good. I get a motion to support and authorize, to support this project and authorize the DPW to move forward on it and the Water Department. A motion, and a second. And comments and questions? Mr. Givinoni?
Brian Givinoni, 89 Rocky Middle. I'm not on the water system, but I know a little bit about water. One of the problems we have is that we're forced to own the water quality right up to that town, in other words, in the sink, even on private property. You've got public property, you are personally responsible as a town to go to that property line. What they're trying to force on you, the federal government, which then gets accepted by Mass DEP, which then has to be accepted by the town, because it's an unfunded mandate, unless they fully fund the project, unless you willingly accept it as the Water Commissioner's. So if you unwillingly accept the provisions of the lead and copper revised lead and copper rule as Water Commissioner's, you can demand that the federal, the state government pay for it. I know everyone's like rolling their eyes right now, saying they're never going to do it. I totally understand that. The problem is, is that once you get above seven, Mr. Babastini knows chemistry, you get neutral. Neutral is seven. You get the pH above seven, you reduce the reactions between lead and copper. Copper plus lead plus, you reduce those reactions. And that's why the water comes out probably at 5.7, 5.8 of a pH, and then we raise it over seven, so that way they're up to almost eight. So that way there, throughout the entire system, we don't have those problems. My concern is that what has been sampled is usually the worst locations possible. DPW said, find us the worst locations possible that could possibly have a lead hit or a copper hit. And that's where they go sample. So when you're not having those hits, or you have basically a little bit of a hit at the worst locations, and now we're talking about replacing them to the people's, on people's private property, the land that they own, the responsibility of the homeowner, you know, we're not talking about going to the property line. We're talking about going all the way in, into the meter, redoing landscaping and all that. That's steep, especially if the 2.6 doesn't cover, because that's only about $500, $500, $600 a service. If it's 500 services at 2.6, that's a lot of money that we're going to have to come up with. Why should the rate payers pay for their neighbors' personal private repair within their home? And by the way, it still doesn't stop it. Because if you have old fixtures in your house, the bronze fixtures, the old fixtures that are all filled with lead, because that's what they were allowed to do up until 78 and then 2000 and something, they changed it again, they keep changing it, and now it's get the lead out completely. Even the fittings themselves that we used as the shut-off, said the property lines, up until 2011, they had lead in it. They're bronze, that's how you make bronze. Now, they have no lead bronze. So where is this going to end? And how much will they pay? Flint, Michigan, the problem with Flint, Michigan was solely because they changed water supplies. They changed water supplies and took a pH that was acidic and dumped it into their system because they didn't want to pay for the water. We don't have that problem here. I'd like to see what we can do without having to replace every service. It'd be nice if we were going down the street and doing repairs, but it gets very expensive for the, especially the rate payers, if they have to come up with it. And I like to say, I'm not on the water system, and I'm not a rate payer, and just because it's retained earnings doesn't mean we want to spend it. We're fortunate that we have the money to pay for the tank and the water, the Mizzaros well, all this stuff. This is great that we have the money to pay for this. We start drawing out these other things. But my concern goes back to, is be careful how you vote in such a way where you've accepted the provisions of this new lead and copper rule, the revision, the LCRR. Because if you willingly accept it, then the state doesn't have to give you a dime. If you don't willingly accept it, if you accept it unwillingly under Proposition Two and a Half, absolutely positively, the state by law, under their own law, has to pay for it. So it absolutely is absolutely that way.
No, I said it's a federal, but that...
Federal government can't, under the United States Constitution, I believe it's the Fourteenth Amendment, you cannot force the states to do anything. DPW has to accept it, which they have. DPW accepts it and then forces it on the towns. That's how they do it. It's never the federal government forcing us directly on this type, I think it goes through DPW. They're the enforcement agency on this. That's how it always works. That's how they can do it. The federal government can't force a local community governed under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's why I say we've got to be careful. Same thing happened in the schools under the homeless transportation bill, McKinney-Vento. Exact same thing. And my vote was to not willingly accept it, but we accepted it unwillingly. That way there, maybe the town will someday get reimbursed through the last 10 years of doing this, but it's been too chicken to go after it. But just watch how you vote.
Madam Chair? Just part of the motion, if you could state that of use of ARPA funds, ARPA funds, which is the federal funds.
Okay, could I get an amendment to the motion to include using ARPA funds? ARPA funds, please.
So moved.
I have an amendment to the motion, and do I have a second? Any further questions on the amendment? And did you want to say something? I'm looking at you guys standing there. Okay, I don't want to cut you off. Okay, so this is the vote on the amendment to include the ARPA funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now on the original amendment, giving the DPW and the Water Department the okay to move forward on this. Any further comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Jermaine?
For you two, Mr. Noon, do we actually have a choice on this?
What's that?
Do we actually have a choice on this?
What do you mean, have a choice?
You mean that if we don't agree to do this? I assume that the EPA is going to force us to do this, is that correct?
That's what I heard, too.
It is a mandate, correct?
There's really no other way to vote. Say again? There's no other way to vote but to really accept it.
Well, it's up to you, but... If the EPA is mandating it, it's a mandate.
Well, Madam Chairman, this is limited to those 500 homes you've identified, right?
Correct.
Say it again, Neil?
It's limited to the 500 homes you've identified?
Also, I have the paper records back to 1885 or something. Unless, Brian, I've asked multiple engineers, I don't know any other way they would have done it, from 1885 to 1970. It's not classed, and I've asked multiple people. It's...
And this is all you've come up with, this is 500? So it will be limited to this?
Market unknown as lead. The engineer recommended maybe test wars. If we do test wars, they're 25% all the way there.
Yeah.
Reminds of fire lines. So we would discuss that if this passes, but I'm oriented to say yes. It would be a nightmare if we got up into the 600s, 700s, but the dating record's 130 years old.
It's hard to tell.
Technology.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, this is the actual motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. You're off again. All right, next, could I please get a motion to approve and sign notes for the DPW and Water Tower?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? And this is just, the treasurer went out to bid for this and came with a K5 at the best rate at .38%.
That's incredible.
Half percent?
That's incredible.
I know. I wish I could get that right. Municipal borrowing, see? Okay, and that is for the $250,000 that was voted at town meeting for the DPW and the $2 million for the water tower, water storage tank. Okay? Any comments or questions on this? We have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Moving on, this was put on here, I was not here when this was done, but it is my understanding that the board approved this permit with conditions, and we just have the conditions in here today for us to officially approve and sign.
The thing is signing it.
Yeah, it's mostly signing it, that's why we have it.
I amended it as we discussed that.
Yeah.
I attached the plan to the permit. We're looking for meals, okay, and everything.
It certainly looks good to me.
So we got everything we need now, and so this is just a vote to sign it because it has been amended. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? From the audience? Hearing none? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Okay, so I will not be able to stay in my position as one of the Board of Selectmen representatives to the South Coast Rail Stakeholders Group. We did go back, there are two selectmen. You were just filling two seats as Commissioner of the Store Commission and Selectman. There are two selectmen and two planning board members on it. So, because I will be leaving, we have to have another one reappointed from the board to be the representative to stakeholders. They meet once a month on Mondays at 3:30, is it the second Monday?
Yes, usually the second Monday.
Usually the second Monday. So, and it's a good place, we need to have selectmen there and planning board because we found out water stuff that went by us that we'd never heard of this last week, so... Mr. Rosenthal has expressed interest at serving as this, so unless anyone else on the board is interested, I would entertain a motion to appoint Selectman Rosenthal as the representative to the South Coast Rail Stakeholders Group.
So, second.
I have a motion and a second. And just for record, Selectman Babastini serves on that as the second Board of Selectmen. Okay, any further comments or questions? Thank you, Neil, very much. We appreciate it. All in favor? Aye. Okay, and up next, we have presentation, discussion. Janice, I'll turn it over to you. An introduction to Chandler Thinks.
Thank you. I just want to give you a little background, Madam Chair. Just to remind the board how this came about. Several years ago, our Downtown Improvement Committee was introduced to the idea of branding, and we had a big interest in it. The Downtown Committee is made up of store owners and shop owners of the downtown. They have a vested interest in the downtown, and they know that Middleborough is changing every day. More people are coming in, and things are happening like the South Coast Rail, and this is a time of change. They started a hearing from the town Plymouth. They presented the branding efforts in Plymouth. We know that we're not Plymouth, we're not a tourism draw yet, but they presented to the Downtown Improvement Committee. We also had another couple of branding companies come in and present to the Downtown Committee. And we brought this to the committee, to the Board of Selectmen, and you all approved a request to put out an RFP to look at consultants who can do downtown branding. We had six respondents, some of them from Boston, some of them from out of state. The presentations were held via Zoom, and the committee was all on board and heard the presentations. The two most outstanding presenters, both happened to be from out of state. They presented a comprehensive approach to getting to know Middleborough. It's not just about logos, and I'm sure Chandler Thinks will discuss that a little bit more. And it's more of an uncovering process of the current state of Middleborough, where it's going to be going in the next decade, how it's changing, and trying to shoot for a future goal, operating now as well as towards that future goal with the branding of the downtown. Trying to bring more business to the downtown, more outside recognition to the downtown, and growth. So the, as I said before, the two finalists were another company from out of state and Chandler Thinks. Chandler Thinks is from Tennessee, and we'll be talking about their comprehensive approach to branding. I did want to let you know that the funding for this program and this project is from CDBG grant fund repayments. Throughout the past decade, the OECD has been applying for CDBG funds to help with the downtown, to help with single-family rehab, and many other activities, including multifamily rehab. From 2002, 2005, 2010, 2013, they received grants for single-family rehab. Those loans that were put out through that program to single-family homeowners are now coming back, being repaid. And that is considered, depending on the year, unrestricted funds. DHCD, who was the pass-through of the federal CDBG funds, is requesting that those funds be used for community and economic development in keeping with the program parameters. We have funds coming in all the time. We can look again at how we can use the funds in the future, but right now we have funds available to cover this payment without any impact to the taxpayers. So without further ado, I'll come back up if you have more questions. I'd like to introduce Steve Chandler. Mr. Chandler, thanks.
Fantastic. Hello, how are you doing? Nice to be here. I have notes on my phone. I'm not looking at Facebook, but it's a phone. I've probably, I've done this a few times.
You need the Wi-Fi?
No, I'm good. I'm good, this is my specialty, I can talk about it. Glad to be here. So my name is Steve Chandler, name of our company is called Chandler Thinks. Greg Fusong is our Director of Research. Michaela Markhart, from Austria to Knoxville to Los Angeles, and now to Middleborough, is on her way here. She's probably meeting us at some cafe, I think, that's within walking distance. She came a little bit different route, but she's a third member of our team that's here this week. We're a place branding company, that's what we do. We do not work in healthcare, we don't work in finance, we don't work with bowling ball companies. I used to work in a bowling ball account back in the ad agency days. We help cities, downtowns, communities, destinations, places, whatever geo socio-economic footprint defines us, that's what we do, and that's all that we do. Which I think warrants a question, if this is important to our community, I think it is. There's a great quote by a man named Bill Baker. He wrote a great book, I wish I wrote it, because I'd get a lot more publicity if I did. But I highly recommend it if you're interested in the topic about protecting your city, your destination, your downtown, about why your reputation matters. He said, you know, the greater the reputation of a city, the more successful its businesses, the better place it is to live for the residents, and the more wonderful place it is to visit. At the end of the day, this is an economic proposition for your community. You have a responsibility to look out for the well-being of your community. And it is more competitive than it's ever been, and it's very difficult to manage your reputation. That's really what we're talking about. You can react to your reputation, that's a tough spot to be reacting to, or you could proactively direct it. You can't control it, but you can try to manage it, to try to affect it. My definition of destination branding, place branding, is simply this: the strategic orchestration of everything you do to positively affect what everyone else says about you. So it benefits and serves the residents first, the businesses, and its visitors. That's my definition of place branding. It's hard, it's very difficult. You have three strikes against you. That most branding, I saw, you know, big brands around this area, ride the train, immediately I see Gillette. I think that was their headquarters as soon as I left the airport, is that correct? Right? They have it easy compared to a downtown, or a city, a town. Branding a company is easy compared to this task for three main reasons that you don't, that we have strikes against us. We don't own our name. We don't, you don't own your own, I mean, that's the most important branding tools, what you call yourself. You don't own your name. Anybody can use Middleborough. There might even be a Facebook page out there right now that says something Middleborough that you don't like, and it's a hassle to you all the time, you have to hear about it, right? Most communities do, by the way. But you don't own your name. Heck, even the TripAdvisor listing for Middleborough misspells it. How about that? You can't even control your name, right? Because other people use it. There's businesses in town that use your name. That's sometimes a good thing. Sometimes it might not be. But it affects you. You don't own your name. You don't control your product. Isn't that 101? Right? Whatever your product is, or your company, your business, that you're going to deliver the exact same service to every single customer, no matter how they come in contact. Middleborough doesn't always control its product. You try to, the services, but anything that happens in the geo-political boundaries of Middleborough and downtown Middleborough, you get the blame for it. I love to say you get the praise for it, but we always know that doesn't happen, right? You probably get more blame than praise. Welcome to public service. So you don't own your name, you don't control your product, you don't have complete control of your product, and you don't have hierarchy of communications. To use the previous example, Gillette, there's a CEO that says, this is how a business is going to run. Here's what we're going to do with our branding and marketing, and everyone's going to follow. We don't have that luxury. We hope people want to be partners and play along. We hope people follow our branding, but they don't have to. We can't make them. It makes it really difficult. Branding is difficult. Which is why hiring a company that's done this, and a person that's done this over 150 times in my career, Greg's done this over 150 times in his career as well, so is our creative team, by the way. Why do you hire somebody from Franklin, Tennessee? I think it's important. So if you, I won't wait for the questions, like when people ask me, what do I say? This is all that we do. I'm all for using local providers, I think it's very important. We recommend it whenever you have a local designer that can be used for some of the implementation, if it's appropriate, let them do it. Printing, things like that. But, I don't know that many people locally have sat in front of the amount of public leaders and local stakeholders in the downtown and the community, and have people beat their fist on the table, let me tell you why I love my community so much, let me tell you why I love my downtown, why it's so important. This is very personal to people. And you have to have the ability to listen and get engagement from the community. The branding for downtown Middleborough is not because I think it's a great idea. I'm a professional listener. That's what our company does. We're professional listeners. And we can take from experience of working with over 100 some odd communities and pull from it. There's no other community like yours, but we can see some of the examples of things and learn from it, and help you all be successful in the implementation of your branding. Last thing. What is branding? If I had, if I was doing like a big presentation and I had more time, and I won't, I would ask you all the question. Tell me about, and I would pick a city. I could pick Cape Cod, or Martha, I could pick any city around here. And I'd say, well, tell me about it. And again, I'm going to speed through it, rather than ask you the questions, okay? But you would give me answers. Everybody would go, oh, here's what it looks like. You talk about the streets and what it looks like, and the architecture of the buildings, and the shops. Oh, I love this little shop, it's fantastic. You would tell me all kinds of things about it. And I will promise you, the one thing you won't tell me about that place is you will not describe its logo. I do this exercise a lot. I did it last week with 220 tourism professionals. No one ever describes a logo of a community. Your brand is not your logo. It is used, it is an element used in branding, really valuable. So when people see it, they're reminded of a lot of things. But the most important thing is that they're reminded of a lot of things. Right? The logo can only go, oh, that's the place where I saw this, or that's the place with that historic courthouse that, you know, that town hall that they have, right? It'll remind them. But no one's ever going to move here because they think you have a great logo. We'll do a logo for the downtown branding project. We'll develop one. It's a valuable branding tool. But if that's all that it is, you're paying me way too much money. I'll be the first to say it. Reality is, your reputation isn't built on a logo. Your reputation is built on how this place makes people feel. The downtown business owners, the restaurant that we're about to go to tonight, Something Cafe, Central Cafe, that's what we do. When we brag about a place, right? Oh, I loved, they made me feel so great. And we've done that. We've visited communities on business. And our, their entire reputation, we labeled the whole community because maybe one person was rude to us. They're so rude. We've all done that. And we don't give them a second chance. People do that to us, to us being Middleborough. So, your brand is a story. It's a collection of the businesses. There's actually eight pillars that we use philosophically in all of our research and our engagement that we do with the community. But it's, you're made up of your businesses, your heritage, your culture, arts and entertainment, your education, your civic leadership, your ability to work well together, or not. I don't know yet, I don't know yet. Right? The people of the community. And I'm from the South, it's okay, he talks funny, I'm all right with that. I'm not that bad unless I say certain words. And their quality of life. Is it real busy traffic, or is it a little bit easier to get around? All of those things apply to every single community, and that's its brand. Any of them can divide you completely, or you can work together. That philosophical approach is what we use in our research, which we're a very research-based approach. I love the creative, the creative work is fantastic. Telling your story is about telling, is about wonderful creative expressions. But it's all based on, what does the community think? Why do they love it? And what do other people say about you? So that's what we're going to do. Last thing, is your brand about your heritage, where you've been? Is it about where we are now, or is it about where we're going? Yes. It has to be all three. You have to, you never want to turn your back on where you've been. Your heritage is your unique story. So it's super, super important to preserve that, and that it is part of your story. You have to be, it has to be about now, because you have to deliver it. Like, a really important aspect of branding is, it has to be authentic and true. And people have to feel what you're telling them. But it also should pave a direction for where you all are going. When you all make decisions here for your community, for downtown Middleborough, you should be able to say, does that fit the character of our community? I mean, it looks nice, but is that us? And you should put that story and that request into the architecture and such. So it absolutely lays a map of where you're going. So, excited to be here, excited to talk to you all. Obviously, I'm pretty excited, because this is what we do for a living. We're glad to be out, and I would love to help you all very much. Any questions?
Looking it up to the board? Anyone?
Yeah. Madam Chair. So my question to you is, is this the only town or city that you're doing a presentation in? Or basically, did you, are you on a tour of Massachusetts? And you're going to, you know, going to towns and trying to gather work? Or did you fly in here specifically?
Yes, I did.
From Middleborough?
I came here, we came here specifically from Middleborough. Yep, we're, yeah, we're not on a, we're not on a tour. We're here to get some intel and collect some input and to speak to some people. We've already, we are planning on meeting with a handful, more than a handful of people this week, starting at Central Cafe. We do a lot of mystery shoppers while we're here, by the way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That it?
That's all going on?
Mr. Jermaine, or did you want? Okay. Anyone else here? I'll go. You know me.
I think they're waiting for you.
I have no problem talking about this. I'm actually a veteran commissioner on the Plymouth County Development Council, and have been for, I would say, eight, 10 years, the driving force behind bringing visitation to Middleborough. So I know a thing or two about it. And what bothers me, and I'm going to say the elephant in the room, is Middleborough is not about downtown. Middleborough is not the kind of town that is about those two streets downtown. Middleborough is the Haring Festival with the Haring Run, which is not downtown. The Soul Homestead, which is way out in east Middleborough. The Oliver State, which is down off Route 44. Middleborough is about a whole bunch of attractions that encompass almost the whole 72 square miles of the town. And I think we would be selling it short to concentrate on branding just the downtown, and I have to say that. Most of the events that we have, other than one, other than Crazy Days, I would say almost every other event we have with thousands of people that attend happens outside of that downtown. Now, if you want to bring that in and incorporate it, that's one thing. But I really, and I think there are other people that feel the same way, let's brand downtown Middleborough, downtown Middleborough, downtown Middleborough. I'm sick of hearing it. Okay, I'm being perfectly honest with you. And, working outside of the town, in the county, and actually beyond now, that's not what brings people to Middleborough. And we know what we have been doing at these outside areas brings people to Middleborough. Because when we first started marketing them and bringing them, our hotel receipts jumped 33%. Because, so we know what people come to Middleborough for. And that's where I'm coming from. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Jermaine.
For you, Mr. Chandler, thank you for being here. I'm sure you're very good at what you do. I have the same concern that Chairwoman Delby has, number one, including the entire town of Middleborough. I prefer to use local resources, nothing against, you know, being from out of state. But the major issue I have with this is there's no presentation. I mean, it was put in the pack at 6:30. Do you expect them to read 41 pages? Not you, but in general, before we get here? And how do we hear what you have to say and vote on it tonight? That seems inappropriate to me.
Madam Chair, so we went through a procurement process. We ranked them, and by Massachusetts general law, we have to go with the group that scored the highest, which was Chandler Thinks by the board. We did have this discussion several months ago about whether or not it should be downtown or the general community. The price and the contract is for the downtown. I think if we add the community and there's an additional fee to it. So, that's where we stand now. Over the next two or three days, Steve and his team will be interviewing people who love Middleborough and people who may have some concerns about Middleborough. So you want to hear it all. The meetings have been scheduled over the next several days, so I invite all of you, if you have not scheduled a meeting with Steve and his team, to do that. I've talked to Janice about some of the people who should be, who Steve and his team should meet. And he'll be doing that over the next several, several days. But, you know, like I said, we did have this discussion. We can't just go with a local person, and we do need to follow Massachusetts procurement laws, which we did.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Many years ago, before the malls came in and everything else, Middleborough and Plymouth and Taunton and New Bedford were regional shopping areas. Plus, it was a vibrant industrial community here. And so, people made money and did very well in business without working at it. Particularly on the weekends, you know, Saturdays and Fridays and all that, the streets were crowded. You almost had to hustle each other. And the small stores, the type of store that was in Middleborough, were very much in vogue, and this is what people knew. And there was also a tremendous sense of community that exists in downtown Middleborough that we still have some of. In other words, you still meet up with people in downtown. We do have a downtown that is unique, and it's a real downtown. We don't have just a pass-through on a highway where, oh, that's the town office building. You know, we actually have a real downtown. I think that's a tremendous asset that more or less still keeps us a small town. Without it, I think we'd lose our sense of who we are as a small town. We are going through some remarkable changes, and one of them is tremendous development crusher coming in from outside that is going to, one way or the other, change the face of downtown Middleborough. So I'm all for knowing where we should be going. And I do think that if you know where you want to go, that you can more or less make that happen. So to that degree, I think this probably is a valuable exercise. But we have a long history of changing sidewalks and doing facade improvements, but nonetheless, not being able to attract the type of business, or the type of well-capitalized business, or the businesses that everyone recognizes because of the demographics, to come to downtown Middleborough and create a natural draw. And to some degree, we've zoned out bringing in the type of businesses that would create a draw but have a certain unsavory characteristic to them. So marijuana, things are all out on Group 28. Our adult entertainment section, which probably never will evolve, is off in the boonies somewhere. So, we're very limited, plus the nature of business itself. The shoe stores, the clothing stores, all of this have changed dramatically, and they don't necessarily fit in the concept of the traditional small town that we have now. So I do think that this could be a useful exercise if it's directed in letting us know what we ought to be and how to get there. And to me, that's, and particularly when we're challenged with what's going to be a 40-hour article in a town meeting, it's probably going to increase the, potentially, the apartments in downtown Middleborough area, particularly the underutilized areas, by another 600 apartments. And that in itself will, if it passes, will have a significant impact on the businesses and everything that are here. Leilani, to her great credit, has professionalized tourism and introduced it to the town in a way we never had before, which showed us we can draw people from more than 30 miles away. But, so we know we can bring people to the downtown. The question is, once we get them here, whether we can get them in these local businesses and all that type of thing, and turn it into something that's beneficial to all. That's the real question.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
So, my question for you is, if we decide to go with a plan like this, how do we sell this to the rest of the businesses in Middleborough that we're not leaving them behind?
The rest of the businesses, a plan like that, that plan is the downtown branding plan. And so you're, I just wanted to make sure I clarify the question. The businesses that are not part of downtown, what are they going to say?
Exactly.
That's your question?
Yes.
Hey, you've got to be prepared for that, right? You know, I would hope, but I don't know. In fact, I don't hope, I'm unbiased at this point. I don't have a favor of who it should benefit, which is another reason why I would say for an outside company, I'm not, we're not going to make recommendations because we have a dog and a hunt. A lot of the case, downtowns are the hub and heart of the community. That's not always the case, but often it is. And the downtown has, usually has a responsibility to serve all of the community. It does not belong to just the businesses of downtown and the people that live downtown. So it should benefit the entire community. And there's a, there is a, an energy that's felt in any, most communities that I've worked with, with their businesses economically. That's the only way to feel it that really counts, right?
Yes.
That there is a spillover. Absolutely. Downtown festivals and events that occur over the country, or are starting to again, the businesses outside of their downtown feel the economic impact of it. We do economic impact studies for festivals and events, so I see the financial implications of a thriving downtown and what that can mean to the entire community.
So, I would add that, overall, my fear is that, you know, we go with something like this, we brand downtown, and businesses that are on the outskirts of town, they feel ostracized, they don't feel welcome. Like Leilani said, there's, you know, Middleborough, 72 square miles. There's a lot of businesses that pay taxes.[1766.31] Um, there's a lot of businesses that pay taxes. And I feel that if we're dedicating funds, um, you know, to brand the town, it should be all of the town, it should include all the businesses. It shouldn't just include, you know, two blocks, essentially. So, that's all I have to say.
Madam Chair. If I may, I mean, you can, we can define the downtown. Obviously, the downtown says a lot about a community. I live in Taunton. You can't compare downtown Taunton to what it was 10 years ago to what it is now. A lot is happening in downtown Taunton because the specialties, restaurants, there's apartments. The, the whole downtown has changed. It's helped the city tremendously. Uh, most of the businesses in Middleborough are downtown, South Main Street, Route 28, the Rotary. Uh, you know, there, there are some businesses down south of Middleborough, there's no sewer, there's no infrastructure. Uh, so we can define the downtown. Like Steve said, what's good for downtown is good for the entire, uh, entire town. I mean, a lot of communities across the state, not only cities, but towns, have transformed their downtown, and it has made tremendous, tremendous, uh, impact on economic development, uh, in the community.
Madam Chair.
I mean, just specialty restaurants and, uh, you know, apartments can do a lot. We're gonna get a commuter rail station. We have a local businessman who is interested in several properties downtown, which hopefully we'll be hearing about in the next several weeks. Um, so, again, what we can do for downtown is good for the entire town, including businesses who may not be directly in the downtown area.
Could I add one small thing, just add to that? I'll be quick.
Sure.
Yeah, most downtowns, it, it would challenge you to, to think about it. It could be, you could go big like Boston if you want to, get their brand and what they're about. Right? I mean, anybody in the country is gonna start talking about a bunch of things about Boston. Where, what, and what would those things be, right? The, you know, from, I mean, I'm in Tennessee, so we only learn the history book stuff and what I see on the news, basically. Right? But you're gonna start your conversation with the reputation of a place like Boston? And again, you can apply this to about any community that you know really well. It's the heritage. Where did that heritage take place today? Where do you go look at it? A lot, a lot, not all. That's why I actually tried my best to give you the, if I did a presentation, I would've shown you the, the branding wheel that we call it, the eight pillars. But heritage is so important because it always points to the downtown. Right? Outside the downtown area, we have different types of zoning at times or codes because we want to, we, we have different textures and fields of the community. A downtown is almost always the heartbeat of the larger identity of the city. They are one and the same. They complement each other, but usually it's the pulse of the larger one. So a lot of the, the discussions and development of that plan in our conversations with, uh, with Janice and the rest that was on the call, was, there was a lot of back and forth about downtown and the community, because they are symbiotic usually. Right? Um, but there are some expectations of the downtown that people have that they don't have outside of the downtown. Heritage and preservation would be one of, probably the top of the list. Unique shops and things, not necessarily the, the chains, although we like those too, they're just around it. So it creates some expectations, but the reputation of one is pretty connected to the, to the greater. It's impossible to pull them apart.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Demers.
Um, through you, to Janice, actually. Um, what's your definition of downtown? So I know which businesses are actually included downtown and which ones aren't.
May I just first, I just came up to comment on your other comment about outside businesses. Part of the outreach that Chandler thinks is doing is pulling in about 12 different representatives from businesses outside of the downtown so that they are indeed incorporated into the exchange of ideas and thoughts about the downtown. Again, you always have the option of expanding the contract to the entire town, if you so decide. But they are being involved in the discussion, as well as other communities are gonna be reached to, out to, to get an idea. Um, as far as to that question, we had, um, one of the things in the scope of work that we have is to agree on where the downtown is. Right now, we're utilizing, uh, or encompasses. Right now, we're utilizing a map that we use for the local rapid recovery program and the planner that we're working on the downtown project with to identify the downtown. We can expand it to where it makes more sense to reach out to more people and more, people and businesses that have more impact in that particular central area. There's a, um, there's a definition by census data through HUD as to what is downtown centralized Middleborough. Um, that has its own definition. So I, right now, it's up for grabs as to where we want to define it. Um, it's, right now, we're looking at the downtown corridor through Jackson Street, uh, all the way down to the DPW, up to, um, uh, the, uh, Ever Square, uh, John Glass Square, excuse me. And then several blocks out to the west and the east of the downtown street. So it's encompassing a large area, including the museums, the cultural center, and some other activities, library, lots of others.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis.
Well, I agree it's important to look at branding of the town as a whole. I don't see this as a futile exercise. Um, you know, saying save the rainforest doesn't mean screw all the other trees. You know, it can be good to take a small focus on something, um, that we need, that's, the focus of the group is the Downtown Improvement Committee. I mean, that's what they're specifically tasked with doing. Um, you know, I don't see this as a negative to have this look at just the downtown. If we want to expand it, then great, we can come up with the money and, and do the whole town. Um, but I think being able to take the time to specifically look at the needs of the downtown. I mean, we did that downtown study, um, what, was it now, five, six years ago? Um, and we saw some great recommendations, and we were able to act on some of those. And, you know, looking at fine dining and things like that to draw more people in, because that's just gonna bring people out from outside of town. Um, being able to tie that, those two things together, um, to kind of create a better picture of things we can do to immediately help, um, the downtown area. And then we can take those and bring those further outside. I think that's gonna be a useful tool in the future.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, it's the last thing, last thing I'm gonna say. We've had a lot of people over the past 20 years or so, I'm sure, much longer, who have done a lot and a lot of volunteer time to improve downtown Middleborough on the move. They have all kinds of activities, so like, this is something that will support their efforts as well. The downtown groups, um, you know, we have a theater downtown, we now have, uh, a few restaurants downtown, so this is going to help, uh, their brand, uh, as well. But I think this would be a big support for the Chamber of Commerce, for Middleborough on the Move, for the Tourism Committee, for a number of the groups who are trying to market not only downtown Middleborough, but the entire town as well. If they come into a festival, hopefully we can get them to downtown. Uh, so that's all part of the exercise as well.
Uh, Mr. Jermaine.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
If I can ask a direct question of Mr. Chandler. Um, pretty much a return investment kind of guy, what are we going to get for $67,150? Are we getting a plan that will bring people to downtown? Are we getting ideas? Are we getting brochures? What are we exactly getting for this return?
Yeah, uh, you're gonna get a lot of research, I'm gonna try to go in order the best I can. You can get a lot of research about what people think about Middleborough and downtown Middleborough. All right? Uh, it's not gonna be just of people that live in downtown Middleborough. As Janice said, it's gonna be all over, uh, including people outside of Middleborough, what they think of you. What your neighbors say about you matters, right? So we're gonna have, so there's gonna be a lot, a lot of research, uh, that made it sound real simple. There's, there's a lot, there's about eight different pieces of it, uh, and a research report for that. Uh, then, uh, we're gonna give you direction, uh, a brand strategy. Like this is, uh, more of a strategic document that says, this is how, this is the character, based on your all's input, not, we're just interpreting it, you know, and putting some edge to it, of course, that's what we do. But we're gonna give you a brand strategy of, of what downtown Middleborough best, best branding positioning, uh, should be. Uh, and then creatively, we have to make, we're gonna make it come to life. So we will, there are some creative deliverables. Uh, logo, possi, I say possible tagline, it's actually a deliverable, but we've actually recommended not to use one before. So, um, it should be the right thing to do, not because we just said we're gonna do it, right? Uh, but, uh, advertising, uh, uh, concepts, uh, creative deliverables of a logo. And we're gonna mock it up and show you how to do things that aren't part of this project. But what would it look like if we did, if we did some, and I don't know if I'm hitting on something that's just, something that was discussed last year and I'm about to step on it, I don't know. But wayfinding, sometimes that is one, wayfinding or entrance signs, welcome signs, creating a sense of place. I, I'm in a place that special and carries is important. So we mock up a lot of things to show you what, things that would look like, even though that's not part of it. It's in our contract, though, that we're gonna mock up about seven or eight things, okay? So we'll show you, so you'll have to create a portfolio, a logo standards guide, brand standards guide, what everything should look like, business cards, all the things that, anyone that would be marketing some way, what it, what it should look like. And then a strategic plan that says, here's how you brand, in this case, downtown. Here's how you do it. Here's what you need to do, with recommendations, priorities, budgets, and responsibilities for making that happen. Usually, we look at about a three-year period. Obviously, there's many things that take a lot longer than three years as well. Thank you. Yep.
Um, I know we have people in the audience that want to speak. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Diane Fay, 8309 Oak Point Drive. And that's important, Oak Point Drive. Uh, Oak Point is important. Um, there's a couple of things, if I can, through you to you speaker.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, I've been watching recently a similar type study in their own scale of a little town called Donarao in our, they got their whole plan done, they thought it was wonderful. And then they told the people in this, but you didn't talk to any of us.
Right.
They're doing it over because they made such a to-do. Um, and some of the people involved, I know one of, one of them personally, and she's marvelous. But it didn't dawn on her that hers wasn't the only opinion. Um, the thing that I'd like to point out, and I don't know if you've, uh, thought about it or if you plan on doing it, I know Mr. Noon said there'll be, um, some discussions with groups of people. Um, in Boston, with the Boston Public Library and their 25 branches, and I worked there for 38 years, um, we had a committee put together that lasted 18 months studying what the public library does and what the people feel it does or think they do. You'd be surprised, the things that they felt they wanted us to do. Um, I went to a training program to be a facilitator, to facilitate focus groups, and went to all the different branches out in the neighborhoods. It was a crew of us that went around and did this. We had our whiteboards and we marked down what the people thought about the library, what they wanted, what they thought we should have. A lot of them told us we should have things that we've had for years. We just didn't get that information out to the people. And, you know, that's part of what goes with all this. We might have things in this town that we already have or we already do, and people don't understand it. I will tell you, Oak Point is a community of 55 and older, uh, people here in Middleborough. Uh, 1,000 houses up there. Possibly, if they had their way, there may be another 100, 125 more, they've got the land. And they seem to feel that they're like, just in there by themselves. Um, and there's things that they raise that they wish they had, and I think they're nuts. They don't need a gas station in there, and they don't need a doughnut shop, and some of these other things.
Come on, then you would never have to leave.
That's right. They'd never know what the street is like. But we came, we came to Middleborough four years ago. But growing up, we spent a number of years in the next town, Town of Lakeville. And our dad worked for the city of Boston. He'd come in on Friday night in the summers. Saturday morning, it was the trip uptown. We came to Middleborough. We came to the main street. This was, we, we fought to be the ones that went with my father because he could only fit so many bags of groceries for a week in his car with a bunch of us kids. And there were four of us and a couple of nephews that spent summers here. And everybody wanted to be in Middleborough. And, you know, when we, we spent 25 years on Cape Cod, my sister and I, in a little town, village down there, part of, uh, Town of Barnstable, it's Ktuit. They have one gas station, and I think it's been torn down now, uh, since we left four years ago. They have one little restaurant down in the center of town and one a little bigger, the Regarder, up on 28. There's no malls, there's no stores, there's nothing. It is paradise. But we're there, only a village in the whole Town of Barnstable. Hyannis is the big village. So they're not far from everything they need. And they have the same issues in Hyannis that we have here, empty stores on the main street. But they work on it, and they've got a downtown improvement committee that works on it. And, you know, they keep after it, they want to keep their look, the Hyannis look. The thing is that we looked, four years ago, we wanted to find someplace off the Cape because you're like on an island out there, and we wanted to come back to what we call the mainland. We picked coming to Middleborough because we grew up here, and we loved the town. You don't go to the grocery store for your corn in the summer here. You go to the farm, and you get your corn picked that day. And you get your vegetables usually picked that day. It's paradise to be in a place like this. We chose that to come to. A lot of the people that live with, uh, in our community are not from Massachusetts, and those that are from Massachusetts do like the idea of being able to do things like that. But a lot of them don't have that. But it's not just Main Street. There's so much here. And Main Street has a lot. They also have, that wasn't mentioned, they have the Mill Village down here, which is all historic. It's the Historical Society, uh, a couple of streets up and one back by the, by a house. And the library is in Enick, Enick Pratt was born in this town. Uh, he's the philanthropist that funded a lot of the big libraries. Um, we have a library right there in the town that is beautiful. And it, the front end of it is the historic part, it's the historic center. But this is a beautiful town, but you can't just focus on what you hear from the elected officials and what you hear from certain people, because they're gonna tell you the truth too. But you want to get the ear of the people that live here, the people that came here and want to be here, that love the town.
This is, uh, this is why, this is so personal to every single person that chooses Middleborough or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, could you, I'm sorry, you have to go to the podium because we're being recorded. Absolutely, say what you have to say.
By the way, you don't want to, you don't want to bang on the table because that's the mic.
Go ahead, you lead the time.
You're sure you, you're, okay. If you, if you have something to say, go right ahead, please.
Go ahead, I'll let you. I'm not scared.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just saying, this, this, this is exactly why it's not as easy as, let's, let's hire a couple local hotshot designers and let's make a nice logo. Because she just told a beautiful story of why this is important, and none of that had to do with the logo. And that is what's gonna make other people want to live here. And now, we need to have something, so when someone like her sees it, she goes, oh, let me tell you about Middleborough, and then we go, right? That's the idea. Um, we will, I, I left out, I left out a deliverable, a piece of research. And we said, you know, we're gonna do some focus groups and some one-on-one interviews and some mystery shoppers. There's also a community survey that's going out. The goal is to get as many people as possible to take it, obviously. We have a minimum requirement that's statistically sound, but we want to blow that away. Uh, everyone should have input on this community, uh, because that's, that's the only way it'll be an authentic story to tell. So that, that is part of the process. Thank you for sharing that.
Ms. Fay, number two.
Yeah, the Ms. Fay.
Number two, Ms. Fay, go ahead.
I'm gonna be very careful that I don't bang, because people speak to me about that all the time. Paula Fay, um, tenant in common with my sister Diane Fay at 8309 Oak Point Drive. Um, I actually think that the focus of the downtown area is a very vital thing. As Diane said, you know, as children, and I'm much younger than Diane, so I barely remember it. But, uh, truly, Middleborough was the place that we fought to go to on Saturdays. Um, when we decided to move back here, we came for two things. One was because of Bennys, which after we arrived in six months, left. I think they were trying to tell us something. And the other thing we came for was because there were signs on the front lawn that said, "The crazy days are coming," and I thought it said, "The crazy faves were coming." So we thought we'd come here. But I truly think, and I think Mr. Noon's hit it on the nail in regards to the changes in Taunton. And I want to talk about a little town in Metro West called Natick, where I had the opportunity to educate students at one point in my lifetime. And when you drove through Natick, it wasn't Wellesley, as we would say, to say the least. Natick was not Wellesley. I'd drive there, drive through town. The only exciting thing was John Everett's funeral home was there, and we had put down some of our relatives there, and that was it. And I'd go on to the high, high school. If you go to Natick now, Natick is Wellesley on steroids because they actually focused in on their downtown. They ignored the fact that, sure, there's lots of things out there in Natick. There's a mall, there's Collins Brewery, there's all kinds of things. There's a scrub-a-dub on the highway. I mean, there's everything there. They said, fine, but let's focus on our downtown. And I would love to see Middleborough become Natick, which is Wellesley on steroids. And I think it has a great opportunity to do that. Focus small, focus local. We have some great restaurants here. We have businesses here. We have people producing a variety of things that are all available to the community. We need to advertise it, and we do have history in downtown Middleborough. So make So make Middleborough Natick, as I would say.
Mr. Chief of Charge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start with, "Don't Cambridge my Middleborough," first off. And I say that with all sincerity. "Don't Cambridge my Middleborough." And what I mean by that is, Middleborough is not a Cambridge, doesn't want to be a Cambridge. There may be people who like what Cambridge is, but they're not the bulk of what Middleborough is. I, first of all, thought, why are we not looking at all of Middleborough? Because we've got all this space, and I agree with what the chair said. But as I sat here and I thought about it, this would be our logo if we looked at all of Middleborough. For the number of marijuana facilities that we've approved licenses for, it pretty much says, "Middleborough smoke weed every day," because that is exactly what...
We're a happy community. What can I say?
I'm just saying. We went from the cranberry capital of the world, per se, to almost the weed capital of southeastern Minnesota. But I step back and say, I agree. We need to look at the downtown. The downtown, I've been talking about this when there was going to be a casino coming to town. The first thing I said is, "We've got to do something with this downtown." Because the downtown is going to be the hub that the people of Middleborough will utilize, and we can draw people down. I've got a beautiful... At the time, we had a beautiful art gallery. Then it closed. Now it's reopened again. We've got entertainment. I once thought of Broadway Nashville, right here going down Center Street as you go down, having entertainment inside, outside, because that's what we could have. Bring people to Middleborough. That was my vision, is having... We've got a lot of parking hidden in places, but we have it. So at first I was saying, why aren't we doing all of Middleborough? Because I bet you, when you guys drove into town, you didn't even know you were in Middleborough. You drove off the highway, and it was an arrow pointing to come this way. Or even if you didn't even look. You looked at your screen, your little GPS, and told you. There was nothing that said, "Welcome to Middleborough." There's nothing welcoming people to Middleborough. Something I talked about in 2008, 2009, trying to get people just to say, "Welcome to Middleborough." We don't have that. That's something as small as... That's that... I don't want to say the mass hole that we are, but that's what it is. We don't say, "Good morning." We don't hold the door. I like a little southern hospitality. Bring it on, please. As my sister down in Nashville, outside Nashville, she says please and thank you for everything. We could use a little of that. And when you look at the downtown, I can envision the downtown as being something special. And then we can incorporate all the other historic pieces that is in Middleborough. It's not going to be... We're ignoring the rest of it. Whether it's the dirt bike track that has probably got more history than most of the things that are left in the downtown because they've been there for, what, 60 years, running dirt bike races on the edge of town. These are the things that... All these pieces go together. But if you don't have a core, we need that core. I think that this is the core, this downtown. So I came in here thinking, no, this is a waste of money to... Yeah, I think we need to do something about it, as I was thinking about it more and more. Because if we don't have a core, we've got nothing because we've been treading water for too long. Would I have liked to have been working on this 10 years ago? Absolutely. 15 years ago, it's trying. But when you do volunteers, if you have to almost take a big bite of that apple and then... What they're going to present us, they're going to give us the start. Then we've got to run with it. There's a plan. They're not going to come in and say, "Boom, downtown, you're done." You're going to give us something. It's going to be the tools, I hope, that we can then do it. So, I mean, pardon my excitement, but I'm a little bit excited about this. Maybe too excited, but maybe we could use a little excitement. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe.
Maybe. Mr. Montagur.
Good morning. Please, thank you. There you go. I've got all the words in for you. Brian was saying. A couple of thoughts. The hotel businesses that use TripAdvisor, Kayak, and Bookham.com. I know you were talking about the name that we don't own, and it's Middleborough with the UGH. But those businesses don't use the UGH. If you can keep that in mind while you're putting this plan together and ostracize half of the businesses because there's no UGH for their advertising, that would be helpful. As well as the South Coast newspaper, the Gazette, it's Middleborough without the UGH. The post office, the Fed C S without the UGH.
They started it, I think.
So I believe you're correct. So if you're going to focus on the town being the UGH, and everyone comes here, and then all the businesses don't have it, is that a different town? Are we somewhere else, or are we all... You know, don't send them down the road when we're all right here. Is what I'm trying to say. Mr. Battistini had an awesome point. We had done five years ago a survey of some sort or a package.
Study, yeah.
A study, thank you. What happened to that study?
We still have it. We've taken some recommendations from it. Downtown Improvement Committee has used some of it.
Even better. Oh, come on.
We had a COVID there interrupt some of it, but we've gotten a promotional brochure created for attracting business. We've put in new permitting guidelines to make the permitting process more business-friendly. The marketing, I can't remember what other things are in it right now, but there's a bunch of other things that are online. Much of it is marketing or promotion. Much of it is trying to work with the businesses downtown and meet with the business owners to get a property inventory going, which costs money and time, which we're still working on. There's only one person in the office, and we're trying... She is trying to do as much as possible. But that is our guideline because that was approved by the Board of Selectment as the steps and the actions to take. So we are moving forward in all of that.
That is excellent. Thank you. I did not know, and I thought it just got shut aside, but...
Chipping my way at it.
Look what I just did for you.
Chipping my way at it, yeah.
Yeah, I wish we had a permitting guide when I opened my business.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
Just a quick question about the procurement and the bidding process. Was the winning bid the $67,850 or was it the $90,000 plus the $28,000?
Madam Chair, when we ranked the proposals, we could not look at the price. It was based on the interview, based on the proposal. We could not look at the price. But the top two were with a couple of thousand dollars of each other.
Exactly.
Correct?
I'm saying, was it included in project one and two? Was it just included in project one?
Yeah, I hear you. Again, we did not look at the cost. So we just looked at the proposal, you know, based on the interview.
And the RFP, how it responded to the RFP.
And we did check with the state. We could not interview the top three or four a second time. We had to just go with the first interview.
Okay, but I'm just saying, is the overall scope of work... So we're going to brand downtown, and then do we have to restart this entire process and do the rest of Middleborough, or is this all?
They said it would be an add-on, did you not?
Yeah, it would be an add-on if you chose to approve going for the whole town. But right now, they're doing most of the research, which would actually be carried over to the whole town plus a little bit more. But this is why it's so research-heavy.
So did we get bids on the whole town or just the downtown?
Most of them had the alternate term.
They all had an alternate option in there.
They all had the second, yeah.
And did we rank those?
Yes. All six were ranked, yes.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else from board, from the audience? Okay, I am actually one of those people that took one of the slots to meet with you this week. And, yeah, you will see my face again. And personally, I'd like to meet with you before I vote on this. That's how I feel. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, if they've made appointments to meet.
I don't think we can.
We can't.
They're getting paid to meet with us.
Right. This part of the contract.
Oh, so we can't eat with you unless we vote on this?
Correct, because, you know, they need to get paid.
Okay.
They're going to be here three or four days.
And they're also volunteers.
Well...
If I may, Mr. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I know I was going to say it was the last thing, but it just came to my mind. Two weeks ago, unsolicited, on a Friday night, I received a text from a downtown business owner, who you all know, unsolicited, it said, "There were cars from the New Royal, Central. There was a performance out at the Alley Theater in Chad Oak." So there were cars lined up, parked, from, you know, around Everett Square down to Center Street. That was one Friday night. Just think if we had that multiple times. What that's doing for economic activity in the downtown. That was an unsolicited text from a downtown business owner, all excited, from the Royal to the Chad Oak. And if, you know, if Cafe Milano was open and a few other businesses, I'm sure they would have been busy that night as well.
And I just want to say that Saturday evening, we drove through downtown Middleborough and both sides of the street, all the ways up, into the Parish Hall parking lot, beyond Sacred Heart, and down on both sides here. We thought something really exciting was going in town. People were all over the place, so...
So why do we need you? Just kidding. Just kidding. Why do we need them?
Chair, may I make a comment about your original comment, actually? I was nodding, and I wasn't nodding, but I was to a lot of what you were saying about where people visit in downtown. Because although we haven't done all of our research yet, we do stalk you. Because that's what people do when they think about visiting a place. You know what's interesting? This is just my stalking. It's not my opinion. It's my observation. There's not a lot of chatter about downtown Middleborough. I haven't noticed a bunch. In fact, in our office, I said, "Something's up." I said, "Something's up" because I'm not finding a lot of chatter. Specifically, the stalking medium of choice was Twitter. But there's not a lot of conversation about downtown Middleborough. And I do this for a living. I do kind of stalking all the time. People brag about where they live because they love it. They brag about their downtowns. And I was like, why aren't more people talking about... I will hashtag downtown. I mean, I'm telling you, this is the way the world works today, right? Yet I wasn't seeing a lot of chatter. And I told them, I said, "I don't know. I hope we're not walking into a place that doesn't have a downtown."
No, we just don't watch Twitter.
Based on Twitter, Facebook.
Just a bunch of old people. Just a bunch of old people.
I couldn't find... And I can tell you, there's downtowns all across America that there's plenty of chatter about them. So I was concerned, and whenever we drove in, right before meeting in the Uber, I went, "Wait a second. We got something." I said, "Yes."
They have a downtown.
I was concerned. I'm like, I'm not seeing much about it. I mean, there's no... You know, when I go look at online, I wasn't finding a lot about it. There's not a lot of dedicated things to downtown Middleborough. So I get what you're saying. I'm very curious to find out, why isn't there more chatter about downtown? Because my first impression was, oh, we got something to work with here. And everyone in the community, whether you're downtown or not, will benefit off of it. Franklin, Tennessee, has their little downtown like you do. And they also have this giant mall and lots of retail. And as a resident of that county, I'm very thankful for it. But I don't want that stuff to impede my precious downtown. They're different. And the character of Franklin is the little bitty footprint of downtown way more than it is the gigantic footprint of all the retail. Because every community across the country has all that retail. Not everybody has that little... So that's our heart and soul. And I expect that to be the case with you guys too. Hope y'all... I threw "southern" in there. Hope y'all... We're really excited to be here and to learn more, and everyone is going to be involved in some way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Final comment.
Yes, sorry. I'll be real quick. There may not be a Twitter for downtown, but there's an "I love Middleborough." There's "Middleborough." There's a whole bunch of others for "Middleborough" that is out there. And we use them all. So, thank you.
Thanks. I don't use Twitter. Okay, I'll tell you right now.
I mean, I'm too old for Twitter.
I know. I said, I'm too old for that. That's okay. I know. We're going to get going. It's dollar pizza night at Central. Come on, people.
Three dollar, yeah.
Okay, here we go. All right, so pleasure the board. Do we want to vote to move this ahead? It's not going to cost the town any money. We can get some good information out of it. And then we can meet with them this week.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Rose.
I have a couple of questions about the contract itself, because that's what we're going to be voting on. And maybe Janice can answer these questions. I don't know. Number three, the fee for the scope of work is all broken down as far as when we pay and how much we pay. But it's not in any way tied to any kind of phasing of the project or anything else. In other words, fundamentally Chandler thinks we owe him money, and so we're going to pay it. But not necessarily tied to any scope of work or anything.
Well, the different phases were priced out in the proposal. So they're tied to the different phases.
So those shouldn't be in the contract, you don't think?
They're both the same. I think this is probably more of a proportional payment allocation.
Yeah, I'm all for... If we did by phases, they're actually bigger chunks. I'm great for that. I usually try to just spread it out over the length of the expected length of the contract in equal months. We could change it to phase. I have no oppose, if that was preferred, to say... Because there's four phases of our project. We could say after phase one, like to start the project this much, which we did. Once this phase is complete, this... Many of our clients, we do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm used to as a business person, more than...
Yep.
I don't know how the rest of the...
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Demers.
I concur with Select and Rosenfall. I would also add that item F, at the end of that, says November 1st, 2019. So that should probably be changed.
Wrong date, okay.
Close enough.
Okay, so...
I have one other thing. And that's in the last paragraph under section four of the contract, where it talks about creative concepts, stock imagery, and I need to pay for that if we use that. Could you explain what that means?
Yeah, I'll be as direct and as efficient with your time as possible. If we, if we were to show you some ideas, we're not doing a photo shoot. That's key. So therefore, I may have to use images. I'm going to say right now for the record, never use someone else's pictures to promote your place. Don't ever do it. There, I just took care of it. However, if I'm trying to communicate an idea, and I'm being very creative here for a second, I have a certain idea and I want to show you, I don't have the photo that I want. So I'm going to show you one just as a concept of the photo that would work. Then it's a concept. That's what that's covering. I'm protecting me because that photographer could go, "Wait a second. Middleborough took it and ran with it and ran a billboard using this, and I'm telling you now, don't do it." But in case you did it and didn't listen to your consultant, I put that in there. Does that make sense? Yeah, so any stock photos... And by the way, you could. I mean, I've had a place go, "Oh, we love that photo, though, and it's just a beach ball." Who cares? It's just a beach ball. So we'll buy the stock photo. I have not negotiated that for an internal meeting to show you some ideas. So if you want to use the beach ball, then you need to buy the rights to that photographer to use that beach ball. That's all that means.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
I just added one last thing. So when this contract is fully executed and you're paid in full, the logo or any brand and any materials like that, that's all turned over to the town. The town owns that. We're in possession of that. There's no licensing or...
Good question of clarification. Absolutely. It is all yours.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anything we create for you, other than photography, is yours. Yes.
Thank you.
So are we in agreement that we're doing 25% at the end of each phase?
I would say I would entertain a motion to approve and sign this contract with the phased approach and amounts, not as written, if that's...
Well, actually, the first amount would be now.
We can rework it and get it to...
Yeah.
You okay with it?
So that would be the motion if someone wants to make it.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have... We unay or...
I'm a yes.
Okay, so we had four, four and one against. Okay, you got it. And I'll see you Wednesday.
And I'll see you Thursday.
Okay. Hearings, meetings and licenses, none. Town managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had several meetings over the last week about the APRA fund, so we had that discussion this evening. We did have a meeting last week, just to keep you all informed, about the Fortiard district and what could be done at the Chase Chevrolet site. We had a discussion with the Risk of Development. They're doing their due diligence. We need to do our due diligence. Obviously, we talked about their project development plan, South Coast Rail Infrastructure, which is the issue for that development. We will have an article at the October town meeting. We will be doing some outreach on Fortiard. Last thing, appointments and would need Board of Selectment ratification. I am reappointing Adam Geraldi of 4 Olive Street to the Conservation Commission. His term will expire on June 30th, 2024.
Okay, do we get a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I am reappointing Nancy Arques of 12 Thomas Street to the Conservation Commission. Her term will expire on June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm reappointing Dawn Craig of 267 Rayham Street to the Historical Commission. Her term will expire...
term will expire on June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention?
And an abstention. Four, four and one abstain.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Reports committees, commissions, boards. Okay, nothing, correspondence. I just wanted to mention on the FEMA, we have, we did adopt this at town meeting and it has been submitted, so we don't have to worry about that. That is done, okay? And I also wanted to acknowledge Tara, we got a letter from a resident, Mark Belanger, he had, there was a problem with the tech in town, he called Tara, got right on it, was fixed in no time and he compliments and kudos to her. So thank you, Tara. Anything else from anyone else on correspondence? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.